Good evening, my name is Sharon Urquhart and I'm the appointed district clerk of the Board of Education. The July 10th, 2018 regular and organizational meeting of the Penfield Central School District is now called to order at 7:03 PM. Please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first order of business is the administration of the oath of offices to our newly elected board members. So William Jaeger, please stand to receive your oath and raise your right hand and repeat after me, please.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of member of the Board of Education.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of the member of the Board of Education.
In the Penfield Central School District according to the best of my ability.
In the Penfield Central School District according to the best of my ability.
Thank you, congratulations. And now Catherine Dean, please rise and receive your oath. Raise your right hand.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of member of the Board of Education.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of member of the Board of Education.
In the Penfield Central School District according to the best of my ability.
In the Penfield Central School District according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next we have Mark Elidge. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the State of, oops, the United States of America.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of member of the Board of Education.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of member of the Board of Education.
In the Penfield Central School District according to the best of my ability.
In the Penfield Central School District according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Okay, the next order of business is the election of officers. Nominations will be received for the office of Board President and Vice President. According to the Roberts Rules of Order, a second to a nomination is not necessary. However, if someone wishes to second for support, it will be accepted. And then after the nominations are closed, a vote will be taken. So the meeting is now open for nominations for the office of Board President for the 2018-19 school year.
I would like to nominate Catherine Dean as President.
Thank you. Is there a second, John? Okay, are there any other nominations? Okay, seeing no others, I have a motion made by John Piper, seconded by John Otney, to appoint Catherine Dean to President of the Board of Education. Seeing no further nominations, I would like to call for a vote, please. All those in favor? Seven, none opposed. Congratulations Catherine.
Thank you.
Okay, so now you have to take another oath.
Oh, okay, do I have to stand? All right. Do I have the paper?
I will give you a paper.
Just in case.
A little bit different, let's see, here we go.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think it's the same.
Yeah, pretty much the same, just a different substitution of office.
Yes, okay.
So I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of office of President of the Board of Education.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of President of the Board of Education.
In the Penfield Central School District according to the best of my ability.
In the Penfield Central School District according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations Catherine.
Thank you.
Okay, so now the meeting will be open for the nominations for the Board Vice President for the 2018-19 school year. Yes Barb?
I would like to put forth John Piper's name.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion by Barb Babeyars and a second by Mark Elidge to appoint John Piper for Vice President to the Board of Education. Are there any other nominations? Seeing no further nominations, I'll declare it closed and call for a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, seven, none opposed, congratulations, John.
Thank you.
All righty, and so now for your oath of office. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of office of Vice President of the Board of Education.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Vice President of the Board of Education.
In the Penfield Central School District according to the best of my ability.
In the Penfield Central School District according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, John.
Thank you.
And now I will turn the meeting over to our Board President Catherine Dean.
Right. Okay, so we make a motion for exec, to move into exec, huh? Okay.
Catherine, I apologize.
Okay.
Can I just say one thing before you do that?
Yes.
If it's okay with the Board, I'd just like to, if we could just wave goodbye to Mr. Jaeger's family.
Bye Jaegers.
Who wasn't on TV but was in the audience tonight and we'll give a shout out to the Jaegers, so.
Thank you for coming. Good night.
Lovely children blowing us kisses, so. I apologize, thank you very much, and if anybody wants to know what color Will's toes are painted from his pedicure with his daughter today, you can see me after the meeting. I'll turn it back over to Catherine.
Okay. All right, may I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education move into executive session for the purpose of discussing the work history of a particular person at 7:10 PM?
Sure.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed? Thank you. Meeting is called back to order at 7:28 PM. All right. Okay. Anything else folks before we get started? Just checking, all right. All right, may I have a motion in a second that the agenda of July 10th, 2018 be approved as submitted?
Sure. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. All right, approval of consent agenda. May I have a motion in a second that the Board approve the following consent agenda is written up in your packet?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. Treasurer's report. You have an attached treasurer's report for the month ending May 31st, 2018. May I have a motion in a second that the treasurer's report, including the cash report, general fund cash report, the general fund revenue status report, general fund budget status report, school lunch fund cash report, and school lunch fund revenue and expense budget report for the month ending May 31st, 2018 be approved?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. No visitors speaking time tonight? All right, and is it Levia? That's our, right?
Yeah, but she'll be coming in September.
So she's taking advantage of summer vacation?
Yes.
Really? All right. Very good, all right, on to superintendent's reports.
This evening we've got, I just have a few student and staff honors, and then I'm going to turn it over to Bill Maloney, who's going to do the overview of our organizational items as Dr. Sansucci is out of the district. All Greater Rochester teams, I just wanted to say congratulations to our PHS athletes named to all Greater Rochester teams. In tennis, we have Nate Allen and Trey Kernan. Track and fields, Stephanie Teglish and Tyler Sennall. Lacrosse, Joe Barboza, Jack Cummings and Morgan Cox. And for baseball, Gage Zyle. And congratulations as well to a PE teacher at Cobles, Wayne Smith, who is also named the Coach of the Year for our girls lacrosse team this year, an incredible season. PHS graduation, we were all there, lovely, congratulations to the class of 2018, and thank you to all who helped make the graduation ceremony such a memorable event. And for the community, if you would like to see some amazing photos, please log on to Facebook, the Penfield Facebook page, we've got lots more photographs of graduation, which are really wonderful, so, thank you.
Any of our red shoes?
What's that?
Any of our red shoes?
I don't think any of our red shoes made the cut, but they did, I believe, on my Twitter account, so if you'd like to go to the Dr. Putnam Twitter account, you can see the red shoes.
I do follow.
Excuse me, Dr. Putnam.
Yes.
I have a motion in a second. We've got to do something about getting that in the official.
The official photos?
Yes, the official photos.
We'll work on that, I know, I know a couple people, so. Lots of red shoes this year, actually, which is really, really nice.
Lot of the students, too, it was wonderful.
So, but again, and just so, kudos to so many people plan graduation, it really does take a village to make that go off without a hitch, and just incredible support across the board from the high school staff, and so thank you to them. Bus safety program, I say every year that this is one of my most favorite events to attend, so I encourage Board members who are available during these days, Tuesday, August 7th, and Wednesday, August 8th, from 5:30 PM to 7:15. We invite parents and kindergarteners to attend a cafeteria program at Cobles and learn about the lunch program and our cafeteria meal program. And then they actually get on our beautiful, big, yellow buses, parents and kindergartners, and travel to Harris Hill for a bus safety program, and then they return back to Cobles where their cars are parked. So we break it up by saying Tuesday, August 7th is Cobles and Harris Hill parents and their kindergartner, and Wednesday, August 8th is Indian Landing and Scribner. But it really is a great opportunity, if you are available, to stop over, because you get to see, what I love is, brand-new kindergarteners coming in who are usually not crying, and brand-new kindergarten parents who usually are crying. So it's really great to see our kids so excited, and they always, a lot of little kids dress up, as some little kids like to do, and it's really a great program, and it's our, the first real introduction to the school buses for our new kindergarteners.
So where do they start?
Oh yeah, they start at Cobles, right in the cafeteria, sorry, yeah, right in their cafeteria slash auditorium, and then that program takes about a half hour, and then they head over to, they get on the bus and head over to Harris Hill. Board members, if you are interested, you don't need to ride a bus, especially if it's very hot, you can, but the buses are not air-conditioned, and I drive my car to Harris Hill, so. I did the bus twice with my two sons, so it is a lot of fun.
Sweet.
That's all I have for staff and student updates in the summer, and I'll turn it over to Bill Maloney for the overview of organizational items.
Thank you, Dr. Putnam. Good evening, everybody.
Hi, Bill.
Tonight's our organizational meeting, this is where we're required to reauthorize or authorize certain policies, annual appointments, various positions. There are roughly about 50 items that are part of this, and it's required to have this done by July 15th of each year. I'm not going to read each in 50, each one of these 50 items, but I'll just call out a few that are key to some of the business that we do day-to-day. One of the items, appointment of claims auditor, person who reviews our accounts payable, establishing bonding for employees, that's mainly in the business office, authorize treasurer to sign checks, myself, to sign our accounts payable checks and some of our payroll checks when we do run a few. Establish petty cash funds and custodians for those petty cash funds, who's responsible for those funds. And designation of primary banks, where we do our main banking, where we have our checking and savings accounts. Authorize business office to issue tax refunds, so we're allowed to issue tax refunds for anything under $3,000. It saves on time and some of the work that goes into doing those. Authorizes the treasurer to invest monies, actually this year we might have some opportunity for investments. Last few years we've earned roughly probably .1 percent. We're actually in single digits now. So we might see a little revenue on the budget side this year as far as investments go. Participation in Section 5, obviously that's athletics, and appointment of student attendance keepers at all our buildings. And then one of the last items I just want to mention is our fees for utilizing our buses, so that schedule's included in your packet. That's pretty much the gist of what this organizational meeting is considered, it's the 50 items included in your packet, I can answer any questions if you have any, but that's the gist.
Board members, any questions or comments for Bill? Okay, thank you.
No problem, thank you.
I would move that the above organizational items, 6A1 through 6A50, which we used to read individually and in full, so, I don't know how many years ago.
I got it covered.
Be approved for the 2018-2019 school year.
All right, so actually I was going to make a motion and, pardon me? Yes, we were starting on page three, and it goes all the way to page 14, and it lists, and for anyone who is interested, this will be on our website in the agenda for tonight's meeting, but they're all there, they're all listed, it's all very thorough, but it would, yes, there are 50 items, so. John made the motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a second? Any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Yes, Lisa.
Okay. There's a couple that I noticed were to be announced, so do we have to come back then and reauthorize something, or does it just, do we?
So there's occasions where we have to bring items back.
Okay.
Obviously positions can change, or responsibilities, so there are occasions, and as of right now, there might not be a couple people appointed, so you'll see those at a later date. A lot of times you'll see that with like petty cash custodians, obviously they resign or have a different responsibility and we have to appoint somebody new, so that's an example.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Is that it?
But, uh, vote.
Wait, we didn't vote?
No.
Okay, so.
I'm voting.
Okay, that's right, you had the, see, okay. Excuse me while I regroup. All right, all those in favor? None opposed, thank you. All right, so now we are on page 14 of your agenda. For facilities, we have nothing, and then we have our financial items. So, okay, let's see. All right, BOSI Summer School Transportation Contract, Summer 2018. A contract in the amount of $117,045 was received from the Board of Cooperative Educational Services for Transportation, provided Penfield students for Summer School 2018. A contract in the amount of $1,500 was received for ESY field trips. If the Board approves, the following motion is in order. May I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education authorize the signature of the President to contracts in the amounts of $117,045 and $1,500 from the Board of Cooperative Educational Services, covering transportation provided Penfield students for Summer School 2018. The dollar amount is an approximation. The district will be billed for the actual number of students transported and aids used.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. Intermunicipal fuel agreement. The East Rochester Union Free School District currently refuels its bus at the Diesel Fuel Island at Fairport Transportation. However, Fairport Transportation and their fuel pumps will be out of service from June 22nd, 2018, through December 31st, 2019. East Rochester School District is asking permission to use our depot to fuel their single bus during this time. The district currently allows the Monroe County Sheriff's Department, the Penfield Fire District, and Monroe BOSI's Number One to fuel their vehicles at the district pumps. The district is reimbursed for this gas based on our cost of gas on the state contract plus a 10 cent per gallon surcharge. The agreement with the East Rochester School District is under the same terms. Entering this agreement with the East Rochester Union Free School District does not pose a burden on the district. Approval is recommended. Resolution, authorizing intermunicipal agreement. Whereas the East Rochester Union Free School District has indicated a desire to enter into an intermunicipal agreement with the Penfield Central School District, and whereas the Board of Education finds that there is mutual benefit to such an arrangement, therefore be it resolved that the Superintendent of Schools is hereby authorized to enter into an intermunicipal agreement with the East Rochester Union Free School District for the provision of vehicular refueling for the period July 11, 2018, to July 31st, 2020. May I have a motion in a second, please?
Sure. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. Authorization to contract with SEI Design Group. On May 15th, 2018, the district's voters approved both a general fund budget and a separate capital project for elementary school additions. The $22,588,000 Elementary Additions Project includes classroom additions at Cobles, Indian Landing, and Scribner, and alterations and renovations at the high school in Bay Trail. Additionally, the general fund budget includes a $1,028,733 transfer to the capital fund for various renovations, including HVAC, electrical, and PCB remediation at the high school in Bay Trail. SEI Design has submitted for approval a proposal for the necessary design and construction administration services for these projects. The total project budget is established at $23,616,733. The proposal calls for a fixed total fee of $1,548,885, which is equivalent to 7.75 percent of the $19,985,613 estimated construction costs. The proposal also includes an additional $41,400 fee for preparation of the necessary storm water pollution prevention plan. SEI Design has provided a proposal dated July 5th, 2018, detailing their services and fees. This letter has been provided to the Board. Approval is recommended. May I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education authorize the Superintendent to negotiate final terms and enter into an agreement with SEI Design for services related to the capital projects as described above?
Sure.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. The District Emergency Response Plan. Pursuant to Commissioner's Regulation Section 155.17E3, the district held the required public hearing for the Emergency Response Plan on May 22nd, 2018. It has been available for public comment for 30 days and must now be adopted by the Board of Education. May I have a motion in a second that the Emergency Response Plan be approved as presented on May 22nd, 2018, per Commissioner's Regulations, Section 155.17E3?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? Yes, Dr. Putnam?
I just wanted to point out, to remind the Board, that we did receive public comment within that 30 days, and shortly after the 30 days, to be officially correct, but I shared that with the Board. Dr. Sansucci and our Alan McNiff, Director of Facilities, and myself reviewed all of those thoroughly, and they don't all necessarily address the plan that was presented, but there'll be things that we'll be looking at as we move into future planning around safety and security.
Okay, thank you. We had the motion in the second, right?
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor? None opposed, thank you. All right. Code of Conduct for New York State School Board Members. New York State School Boards Association has a code of conduct for school board members. School boards may approve it yearly as a reaffirmation and show of support for the state code of conduct. May I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education approve the New York State School Board's Code of Conduct, it was included in our packet?
Sure.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. Okay, so we have a little business here under President's remarks. We have the NISBA Annual Convention and Education Expo Registration and Housing opens on July 16th, so let Sharon know what you're doing with all of that, and if you are going, make sure you, you know, reserve your hotel right away, because it fills up fast. Any questions or comments, but yes, Mark?
Who's going?
I have everybody, and Lisa, I don't know if you're going.
I think I am, I'm going to let you know.
Okay. And.
I think I told you, my niece is getting married in Raleigh that weekend.
Okay, so, and I have to let you know.
The convention will be cheaper.
Yeah, right. Yes, and I know you're under a time crunch, so.
It's crazy.
Yeah, we have six days. Yes, right, we'll get to it, right. You're going, right, oh no, different question.
Oh, you have a question, yes.
Just to clarify that, you make the reservation, you make the registration, we make the reservations for the hotel.
That's right.
Correct, after I make your reservation with NISBA, you'll get an email that says housing, and then you have to secure that with a credit card, and after that we take it.
Barb?
You have to do the housing.
Just curious, does the registration start like at midnight?
I don't know. On July 16th?
Yeah.
It's a good question.
10:00 AM.
Yes, you know.
Oh, look at that.
Barb, yeah, if everyone heard, is that somebody from our audience knows the answer, Nancy Bradstreet, so it's 10:00 AM.
The registration opens at 10:00 AM.
So then.
But the hotel reservation?
Well, you'll get bounced an email, once I register, you'll get bounced an email about the hotel.
Because you know how it is down there in New York.
I think that's the thing the Board members who attended the conference in New York City in the past is, as soon as, maybe I'll ask, as soon as Sharon does the registration, as close to 10:00 as possible, just be, start looking at your email if you can, July 16th, shortly after 10 o'clock, because they do, once you get your link to sign up for the hotel, they do go pretty fast, and you just get moved further and further away from the convention area.
The Sheraton will be full by 5:00.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I.
Well, the last time it was full.
Even earlier.
Earlier.
Yeah.
And then that second hotel, I don't know if they're still using that, that other hotel.
I'm not sure.
It was across the street.
Yes.
It was across the street, but I, you know, I didn't commit right away, last time we were there.
Yeah, it was Catherine who didn't get in.
But I was only a few blocks away, and it was, you know, it was not a big deal.
You were somebody who didn't get in.
Yeah, it was me.
It wasn't me.
And it just, it was fine, I just, you know.
And there is an app, I don't know if anybody's used Hotel Tonight as an app, but like you can get something up to like three days ahead of time at a hugely discounted rate, and they're decent hotels in major cities.
Oh, okay.
Hotel Tonight?
Yeah, it's an app.
First try it.
Try the registration.
Because you might get, you know, you might be able to get right in.
And you get the conference rate.
Yeah, the conference rate.
I just want to, I just want to share too, as a reminder to the Board, but also our community, where actually we had a team from the high school, including Nancy Bradstreet, our Director of Communications, who will be presenting at this conference, on the important topic of suicide and school culture. We've presented at the Monroe County School Boards meetings, and this year they only are allowing two presenters, and so although we had a group present, only two could actually officially be there, so it'll be Nancy Bradstreet and Leslie Maloney, the high school principal. I am working, we're going to be inviting on behalf of the Board and the district Stephanie Dana and Brandon Fox, counselors at the high school, who were very helpful in that presentation, so they'll be down as well to at least take part in that presentation. But again, just kudos to our staff, who really took a very difficult topic and everything we learned from it, to be able to share with other, with other districts across the state. And so I'm honored that they'll be down there with us presenting. I did tell them that, you know, they can, they can come down, some of them are only going to come down just for the presentation instead of the whole conference, but whatever works for them, so.
Yeah, and Bill, as a new Board member, it was super.
Yeah, and Bill, as a new board member, it was super useful for me to go to that, so I'm glad you're gone.
Yeah.
It's going to be a good, good experience.
It's a great networking event, and, but I've asked Catherine, I'm interested in going to the National School Boards Association Conference in Philadelphia, which is actually cheaper.
And I have an interest in that, too.
And March 30th, you may have an interest, too. We've never participated, we're not members in that, but, and I think, you know, we have opportunities to present at that, too. But it's, it's just a different level from a lot of the board members in the county that have gone, and it's just national speakers, national experts, because there's several thousand more people there, so I think it's time we started maybe looking at a couple people going to a couple things, and others going to others. I don't even know where the convention is next year, do we know?
No.
Hawaii? Or NISBA, I'm sorry.
But in New York City, is it then?
NISBA's, I believe, back in Rochester.
That's what I thought. No, I think it's Rochester.
Yeah, it's the 100th, I think it's the.
Right.
The 100th.
100th, okay.
Next year is the 100th?
Yes.
Where else would you want your 100th celebration than Rochester, New York?
In October.
In October, right.
By the river.
Right.
Right by the river.
So that'd be nice.
All right. Any other comments about the convention? Okay, so Board of Education Work Session, Monday, July 23rd, we've got that set, so put it on your calendar, 1:00 to 4:00, we have it put aside right in the district office.
Correct.
Okay. And then Board Docs Training is Monday, August 27th, which I signed up for immediately, I don't know if you can come, you should be there. Yeah, Jim, is that on you, or are you doing that?
It's Sharon.
Sharon, okay, all right, very good, thank you. Before we move on from here, I would like to make a couple of comments. First of all, welcome to Bill Jaeger. We're, we're very happy to have you here, I mentioned at the June meeting, but now you are one of us, and sitting at the table with us, and like I said in June, we're here for you, we're glad you're here, please ask your questions, we all want to see you succeed, and we're just happy we're, that we're in the groove in the new year, and that you've been able to join us, so congratulations on your win, and you're swearing in, and welcome.
Thank you.
Wanted to say that. Thank you. And Mark, I just wanted to thank you for your year of service as Vice President, you did a great job, you spent a lot of time, effort, and energy, and the whole, on behalf of the board, I wanted to say thank you for all that you did, and we all appreciate it, so thank you very much.
Well, thank you, and I look forward to doing it again.
Well, that would be, you know, that would be nice, so I did not want to let the evening pass without acknowledging all the work that you did, and letting you know how much we appreciated that. All right, under new business, we have the committee assignments, a couple of you have, yes?
This is sort of new business, but, you know, the New York State School Board Association had that reception at the Memorial Art Gallery.
Yes.
That we were all invited to.
Yes.
June 27th or so, and I went.
Oh.
I don't, you know.
Yeah.
Because I wanted to see what it was about, and there were, there were very few members from the Monroe County School Boards, as you might guess, but there was a lot of members from the outlying Ford County, Ford County School Boards, and Genesee Valley School Boards were there. I mean, it was very nice, some nice comments, you know, I'm glad I went, but basically, there was only a few of us that were from Monroe County, but, so sometimes we wonder, what do they do for us? Well, they're trying.
Okay.
They're not defending it, but they're trying, and it, you know, it was nice. Actually, Gene from Honey Hills Falls.
Mancuso.
Oh, Mancuso?
Yeah, none of his board members were there, but he was there, so it was nice, too, and, but, you know, it was just something to try, and that's.
Well, maybe in the future, we can gather a group to go, and, you know.
Yeah, there was one board, Rush and Rieta had their whole board there.
The whole board?
And that was the only, they were the only ones I recognized, really, outside of a few spattering of members, but, you know, it's just, I thought somebody should go, and we'd try it and see, so.
Yeah.
It was nice.
Okay. That is good to know, we should keep that in mind, yeah, especially when an effort is made, yeah. All right, well, thank you for that input, that is something for us to think about and discuss as a board, I think, too. Okay, any other comments before we move on? Okay, so for the committee assignments, I have heard from some of you, and if, the rest of you, if you haven't been in touch with me, can you let me know what you're interested in doing? We wanted to get those lined up. For the Monroe County. Yeah, the Monroe County, I have heard from some of you, I think we need, maybe just, wait, somebody got in touch about labor, right? It was you, both of you, okay, all right. I think we may have everything we need, but if you didn't respond, please get in touch with me and let me know what you're interested in doing.
And if they could give feedback on the topics for labor relations and information.
Oh, for labor relations as well, they're looking for topics.
Those attachments that I emailed you?
Information exchange or?
Both.
Both.
And labor.
They have a list of past topics from the prior two years, and wondering what you're interested in for the coming year.
All right. Barb, have you been the public school, non-public school liaison in the past?
Yes.
And you didn't mention that, do you have an interest again?
You know what, I forgot, yes, I'd be glad to do that, I'm so sorry.
Oh, no, that's okay. I don't think I've heard of any, from anybody regarding health and safety, I'm not, did I?
Yeah, I sent you three, I would like two, you pick them.
You know, John, I've gotten a few.
Okay.
And it's just a little scrambled in my mind as to who did what, okay, so.
It's in there.
Okay, so I'll go through it all, and between Sharon and me, we'll figure it out.
Sure.
And I'm just saying, if anybody didn't, please make your decisions and let your wishes be known, and then we can wrap it up. Okay, very good. Any questions or comments on that?
Just for Bill, the non-public school liaison used to be the liaison with St. Joseph's, and then we felt it should be with any school in our district that's a non-public school liaison, who reaches out to us, so we're not particularly saying this one or that one. So if there is an interest, Barb is the contact.
Right, that would be Finney and Mercy are part of Penn Field.
Yes.
Okay, thanks for that, John. All right, there being no other business, may I have a motion and a second that the meeting be adjourned at 7:58 PM?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you.